Well, the board members here tonight. It's been awhile, so it's nice to see everybody. Let's start today's work session. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. We've all had them and been able to review them. I may have a motion to approve those.
So moved.
All right, a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That was Matt that made the motion and Marie second. All right, let's go to the, excuse me, tabled item. I believe the applicant is online.
Hey, everybody. Would that be the 1750 Bear Road?
That's correct.
Okay. Great, so thanks for having me back. I turned my video on, but I remember last time it started cutting out, so if I start cutting out, just wave me down. I'll turn the video off. Let's pull up us to the larger storage building that I'd like to place on my property on the north prop line. We discussed these two neighbor there to the north and kind of showing him the plans, showing him the variances that I'm asking for and getting kind of his buy-in. I'm not sure if we want to show it or need to... But I've a letter from my neighbor, Mike Kolewski, discussed the plans with him, kind of went over where everything would be, showed him in the backyard, the stakes that I've placed there, and the drawings and all the application that I've provided to the board here. He had no issue or problem with what I'd like to do and was happy to provide me a letter. He did have one request, and that is that he would like to be riding lawnmower on the south side of his privacy fence into the back area behind where his privacy fence is. That wouldn't be a problem. If we look at the overhead drawing that I've provided, there's again, no less than 10 feet from the property line, but his fence is actually nine feet, you know, is his property from the property line, so there's going to be about almost 20 feet between the property... I'm sorry, between his and the building. So plenty of room for him to get his mower back there. And if, yeah, we scrolled down a little bit on that visually, you can kind of see the placement of the building.
So...
The other, the third, I don't know, what's the question?
You were kind of bouncing in and out with your voice.
Ah, sorry, I'll turn the video off here.
Yeah, it's probably for the best.
Okay. So I won't go over the whole thing again, but talked to my neighbor, got his approval. He's happy to provide me a letter saying he had no issue with this building and the size and the placement.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We got all that. We got all that. Matt here was about to ask you a question, and so go ahead, Matt.
So you didn't change the dimensions of the building at all? Am I looking at your supplemental material correct?
Correct, yep. My next talking point was looking at, you know, I was asked to kind of reassess the size and think about, last time I was very prepared, I think, to talk about the placement of the building on the property, but not very, not well-prepared last time to talk about the interior of the building or what I needed to store this room for. So I've created and provided a floor plan that shows what I would be utilizing this space for. Again, the use of the building and size is in order to store all of this, all these items, including a pontebow on a trailer, a box trailer that I have. These items during the winter especially, but some of the items, the trailer itself, you know, are currently stored in the back of my property behind the small shed that I have on the property now. So the use of the space would be, again, purely storage to get those items out of line of sight of my neighbor, as well as keeping them out of the elements and avoiding the cost of, you know, using a storage facility or traveling back and forth to that storage facility. So if we, I don't know if you want to pull up the floor plan, but I've outlined, you know, what I think is reasonable. I did do several drawings of different sizes, anywhere from two feet shorter on each side. You know, I tried a 38 by, 38 by 28, you know, any smaller size than the 40 by 30. You know, there's not, I might be able to fit all this stuff in there, but there wouldn't be a reasonable amount of rooms to maneuver and move around. As you can see, this is all the scale. There's, you know, about a foot to two feet kind of in between all these items. There's not a lot of leftover space. The back, or if on this picture, the top of the picture, the back of the building has a small workbench and then storage shelves for basically large storage seasonal tupperware bins. The house, you know, that we have here, I went over last time, we have a two-car front garage. We can't store anything in it if we want to fit both cars in. We'd like to get the cars out of line of sight, keep them more secure, and keep them out of the elements. So I want to make sure that we have that room and putting a building of this size in the back would allow me to move all that stuff as well as store the larger trailers and items that I've shown on the picture there.
Did you look around your neighborhood to see if there was any building or any shed on anybody's property that was as big as this one would be?
Yeah, I remember you asking that last time. I did do some looking. I found a couple of properties. One is 1736 Fairport Nine-Mile Road. It's a little bit bigger property, it's three acres, but it's a building about twice the size that I'm proposing, and it's much closer to the road, kind of horizontally shaped, so very visible to the neighbors across the street and from the road. And then, just down my street a little bit, 1840 Bear Road. They don't have an attached garage, so a little bit different situation, I'm sure, but they put up a detached garage, you know, a little bit closer to the road and again, property line. Not of that size, but a much smaller property, 0.6, I believe, 0.68 acres on that 1840 Bear Road. So each property that I found had a slightly different, you know, either lot size or building size, but I think it shows that, you know, buildings of this size compared to the property size do exist. And if you see on the picture here with the four proposed privacy trees on a plant, ones have already planted on the south side and then a lot of mature trees, this building is going to be minimally visible, if at all, from the street and won't impact the look or the character that they put at home.
I don't think I have anything else.
All right, it's a little bit unusual procedure for us to go through this again, but any, anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I just, this layout presumes you're putting everything on the floor spread out. There's no way you can store some of this stuff on end, hang it from the rafters, you know, attach it to the walls?
I'm sure there would be, beyond what's in the picture here. I have a list of other items that I'd be putting in here as well, you know, the, just the garden tools and stuff would be going along. There's things like, you know, the hockey net possibly that I could hang from the ceiling. There's other items, and I'd like, you know, to not have to come back asking for change to this building in the future should I want to purchase a go-kart for the kids or a snowmobile someday. So I believe all this stuff, you know, that's laid out on the floor, some of it maybe could go on the walls or the ceiling, but if you look at what's there, it's all bulk stuff. It's furniture, heavy cool equipment, trampoline, garden tools, tables, chairs. Those things cannot go on the ceiling or on the walls, but other items, you know, that are in my garage currently are like the storage bins. Those would be going on the storage shelves in the back.
Do you have a basement in this house?
I do have a basement. There's no storage in the basement as it's finished, and I also have my home office down there. I have a small workshop in the basement that is about 10 by 8, and in there I'm storing, you know, all my power tools and kind of do yourself equipment. That stuff would remain in the house, so this is all additional space that's needed.
Yeah, and all of the items depicted in your floor plan drawing, those are items that you own now and are on the property now?
Correct.
Okay. Wow, okay. How long have you had the boat?
How long have I had the boat? Probably about five years, six years. We keep the boat down in, we keep the boat down in Kandango Lake during the summer and have a mooring there, but the trailer, you know, would be stored during the summer plus.
And where have you been keeping it in the winter?
In the winter currently, I have either stored it in a storage facility and paid for that, or I've found friends that, or I can store it. Or the last couple of years, I've actually had it on my property in the back and, you know, having it on the elements and the visual there.
Yeah.
Not something I can deal with.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, let's move to seeker on this then, if we haven't done seeker.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, that this is a type-two action, seeking no further review.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Matt to declare this a type-two action under seeker and a second by Mike. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yeah.
All right. As far as the substance of the application, you know, I'm going to make a motion to deny it. I think it's just, it's just too big and it's just too much of a variance for the setback that they're seeking, especially the one side where it's supposed to be a 50-foot setback, but it's a 10-foot setback. I just, I think it's too big and I think that's too big of a, the size of it's too big and I think the variance is too big. So I would make a motion and...
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Well, let me just, is there, is there, is there the, a variance regarding the size that you think would be even, even close to this one that would be acceptable? And am I asking it that way because if it's like way too big, then it's way too big. I mean...
You know, it's hard to say because we have, we don't have anything before us.
Yeah.
So we gave him, the applicant, the opportunity to come back to us with, to present a smaller size, to give us something to look at.
Yeah.
And we have, we haven't seen anything, so it's hard to say. I guess maybe is my answer to that.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it were like a matter of 100 square feet or if it's something that it's, you know...
Every foot that it's smaller is, it's both smaller and less of a setback variance.
Right.
I guess the question's kind of irrelevant, since he's not willing to make any adjustment at all, and we gave him an opportunity to do that. What difference does it make?
Well, because now we have a motion to deny, is, I guess, what my answer to you would be.
Well, I think, if I can, if I can step in and say something, I think last time we spoke, you know, I left on the impression of, you know, we were uncomfortable with not knowing and kind of seeing what was going to be in the building, like these are all items that I do have and are either stored outside or, you know, in my, in my front garage here. So it's not that I'm, I left and was unwilling to make it smaller.
No.
I attempted to. It's the, this is the amount of space that I would like to be able to reduce the amount of stuff that my neighbors are seeing in the backyard.
Understood.
And I'd like to see, you know, Matt, Matt, I'd like to see guidance or your guidance as far as, again, if I take this away and really say, okay, if this is not going to get approval, you know, where am I going to come even close? I want, I'd like just some guidance as far as, I mean, if I made it, you know, 35 by 35, or I'm sorry, like, you know, 25 by 35, is that worth me coming back? Like, I'd want to know subject in order to make sure that I'm not, I'm not wasting everyone's time.
I would say some of the things that I struggle with is that the fact that it's so close, you know, it's so much of a variance for the side setback, which I think is compounded by the size of the structure, you know. If we were looking at a smaller structure, then we'd have less of a setback, because it is a pretty substantial setback that we're granting a variance for or the applicant's asking for us to grant a variance for. It's not like it's five feet, you know, a lot of these things that we see are, you know, three, four, or five feet type thing.
It's 40 feet.
Because maybe the property runs on an angle or, you know, there's some hardship that, you know, it's a unique situation, but this is kind of, you know, it's not, it's not, there's nothing really like unique that I see here. And it's not that it's just a little bit, you know, a lot of times we see, okay, I can't put it here because of this, I can't put it here because of this.
But the other piece of it, for me anyway, is when I look at this floor plan, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you want space to move around and things, I look at a trampoline and I see 70 square feet that you could put things underneath that and use your space a little bit more efficiently. To me, this reminds me of kind of like a department store layout where you've got like ample room to move around and everything's on full display.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call one foot or two feet between these large items or trailers or tramp, like I can totally understand and get the point of like, hey, could, you know, the garden tools go underneath the trampoline? Sure. You know, there's other things, ski equipment. I mean, again, if you'd like to see an exhaustive list of all the stuff that I'd like to put in here, I wanted to show the largest items to show that this is going to be used purely for storage.
You know, and I hear what you're saying about... Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no, that was it. I totally get your point of making sure I maximize the space. I think the large items that are here, you know, those are items that you can't store on the wall or ceiling and put underneath one another.
I mean, the difference to me, when you describe it, is, you know, this is the space I'd like, and maybe another way to look at this is, what's the space I really need? Make sense?
I didn't phrase that the right way then, because I mean, to me, this is the space I need. Anything smaller, the boat, I mean, is 24 feet, I think I went conservative on that, 26 on the trailer. You know, I get much smaller, else then I can't fit the boat in there, you know, and protecting these things from visibility and protecting them from the elements, you know, that's, that's the main goal of this, of this storage building. So I'm totally open to suggestions if the, again, if the closest to the property line is the concern, again, it's, my neighbor's put up a privacy fence, it's about 20 feet away from, from the space he actually uses. He signed off on it. I've committed to putting privacy trees. It's not going to be visible to any neighbors or, you know, from the street. There's other properties that I've found that have larger buildings, you know, and similar sized properties that are very visible, and I don't, I don't know the details behind when that was built or whether they have, you know, things that are grandfathered in, but I, I would really like to try to get as close to this size as possible if, if it's worth, again, me coming back to this group or saying, hey, we'd be okay with this if we got down to 35 by 28. Like, that's something I can wrap my head around, and that's something that I, I would want to pursue. But I just want to make sure I'm getting the correct guidance, so I'm prepared for you guys.
I don't see any way how that can work. How can we set guidelines as to what we'll accept as a variance for this particular property?
No, I understand. I, I understand. I just, I guess I'm a little, I thought last month we were clear in terms of the two reasons we tabled it, and so when I saw your resubmission, I just figured that you couldn't live with anything smaller, and which was fine. That's, you're certainly entitled to ask for that.
Right. I mean, this is, this is what I really think I need, but if it's going to get denied, I would need some type of storage space. So you, it ends up, is, okay, this is denied and there's something that is a little smaller, I mean, that's something I'm going to have to decide, you know, and come back with, is that still going to be worth me, me investing the time and money and, you know, creating the property with something like this?
Right.
I'm not expecting you guys to tell me what you would approve, but I came today prepared to show you that this is going to be fully utilized for storage as necessary for all these items, and, you know, and I'm more than happy to go from there. If this gets denied, I want to continue pursuing, you know, what maybe would be reasonable and would be considered for approval.
I mean, one way you could approach it is to look around your neighborhood and see what's already there and what size that is, and take a look at the parcels that you're talking about, how big they are, what's on them. I mean, it's...
He's mentioned a couple in that regard, and we can get confirmation from that at some point if we wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I found one property on Fairport Nine-Mile Road that's three acres, so an acre bigger, but a two-car attached garage and a much larger storage, you know, building that's, that's running parallel to the, to the road and much more visible. I mean, this, this building, my goal with this property is to completely privatize the backyard, and, you know, I don't, I personally, obviously, I just, I don't see this building as being a detriment to the neighborhood or my neighbors or the...
Yeah, I guess we hear what you're saying, but the hang-up, I think, is just that the variances being requested are extremely substantial. I mean, they are. No one's doubting that you'll use the storage, and obviously, nobody's doubting what your neighbor said in the letter. I think what the board is struggling with is just we're, we're really required by law to grant the minimum variance that will work, and now we're struggling with what will work. I mean, you've, you've paid to have that boat stored in the past, and that's, that's a financial hardship, but it's something that you've done in the past. So those are the sorts of things that are, I'm sure, going through the board's minds here. So, in any event...
Yeah, well, I've stopped that to reiterate, you know, that all these items will be stored on the property.
Right.
Back going forward here, once I purchase the property. But, yeah, so I mean, again, I don't expect you guys to say, hey, you know, exactly this would, would be approved, but this is the first time I've ever done something like this, so I just, any guidance that can be provided is, you know, is 15 feet and a couple feet smaller on the building size, you know, is that getting to a better place? Because I'm just not sure, or I'm not exactly sure how you guys are thinking about this or what the, what the main hang-ups are. So the way I'm thinking about it is, it's, it's going to be very hidden, it's not going to be visible.
Right.
Anybody other than if you're on this property, and so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all those points you've made quite well and quite clearly, and yet we still are where we are. So...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, anybody have anything else? I think we can, if you want to come in and talk to Andy about options of when matters come back before the board and such, feel free to speak with him about that. Okay, so we have a motion to deny by Matt and a second by Mike. We've done the seeker, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. All right, again, if you wanted to speak with Andy about what happens in situations like this, feel free to do that.
Okay, sounds good. And would I be able to come back with a proposal? Would this be starting from scratch with an application?
That's exactly what I'm recommending you talk with Andy about. He can fill you in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We do have about five or six minutes. We can go back to the agenda, see if we have any questions for clarification for tonight. So, any questions on number one?
I think I'll just ask, the town engineer has not looked at this property in terms of her sightline or things like that yet. Have they that you're aware of?
No. And the other question that I have is the poles. I believe from the application, the poles are taller than the main sections of the fence show. We say in, we need to consider the height of the poles when we're considering this variance.
Yeah, the applicant represented in one section of the application that they would be four foot six.
Right.
Which would be a foot and a half taller than allowed, and then I saw they were looking at maybe five feet in another section, so I'm not quite sure exactly which one they want to go with.
And we have to go with the highest?
The highest point is, yeah.
Have we done that consistently, though? Usually a six-foot fence is, the panels are six feet high off the ground, and oftentimes there's, you know, finials or things attached at the top. I don't recall us ever looking at the design as an element of the height.
I think the posts we have, you know, decorative finials.
Yeah, it usually comes from staff saying, we found this, you know, issue, or this is what, what we've identified, and in this case, they're saying the columns or whatever, because I think they're a little more larger than, than just a post, are considered four and a half feet or five feet or whatever they're going to be.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Okay, any questions for clarification on number two? On three is, with the, is planning board done with its process?
They, yes, they did approve it. One of the conditions is...
Getting approval here.
The zoning board approved it.
Yep.
Right.
Any questions on four or five? Okay. Let's go back. I think we're good on the agenda then. All right. Okay, we're going to take a two-and-a-half minute recess and come back and start the public hearings. Good evening, everyone, again, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, the... to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the town's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the town's Government Access Channel 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you would like to address the board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the board responds to the applicant's presentations with board questions and concerns. You can participate by phone by calling 585-340-8771, or by electronic submission at www.pennfield.org. I've been asked to repeat that occasionally, but a good time for folks to send in comments or to call would be right after the applicant is done and the board begins its questions. Having said that, I'd also like to say, as we do every month, that tonight's meeting is going to take place in two parts. The first part's going to be the public hearings. The applicant will give a presentation explaining to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will have some questions. And at that point, then, we'll invite folks, members of the public, citizens, to come up and comment on the application if they choose to do so. Or, I said, come up, but in reality, it'll be appeared remotely. We also ask every person, applicant and commenters, to give their name and address, so that the record is clear on that. Each and every month, we point out that the town does a really good job of advertising the meeting, so that citizens know the meeting is going to occur, and that applications are going to be heard, so that folks know that they have a right to come in and speak about them, or email, or phone call. Town does this by sending notices to neighbors within a certain number of feet of the application, by posting the agendas on the website at here at Town Hall, or by requiring the applicant to put up signs. So, when you drive by, you can see that there's something pending before the board. We'd like to hear from folks, because it helps us do our job, and we certainly appreciate it. That being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Andy, if you could read the first application, please?
Sure. Christopher Walega, 135 Walnut Park, Rochester, New York, 14622, requests area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the installation of a taller fence than allowed under Section 250-7.1-D of the code at 2406 Browncroft Boulevard. The property is owned by Christopher Walega and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 123.06-1-19. This is application number 20Z-0014.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant online? Yep.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, if you can give us your name and address, and then go ahead and proceed with your, with your application.
Yes, thank you. Christopher Walega, who lives at 135 Walnut Park. This is my son.
Lucas Walega. Yeah, we're asking for a variance on 2406 Browncroft Boulevard in regards to our fence and height. Should we continue moving on with the application?
So, the height of the posts are going to be four foot six. The main section of the fence is going to be four foot.
Three and a half feet.
Three, three foot six.
Yep. It's going to be the main section of fence running along the front property line and around the entire property. The current code says that we're not supposed to have anything over three feet within 20, within 20 feet of the property, front property line. So, we're only, we're asking for a foot and a half variance on our piers, our posts, and a half foot variance on fencing, the main fencing that runs along the front property line.
Excellent. Thank you.
Concerns.
Were you guys all set, or are you still going?
Well, we would like to address some of the concerns in the neighborhood in regard to the sightlines, but, I mean, I'm sure we'll have ample opportunity to be able to ask questions and.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I was just wondering if you can speak a little bit to, you know, in a sense, the code allows three foot at the front of the property line, and in a sense, that is typically, you know, that's more of a safety-type thing. It's a, you know, as you're coming down the road, it's a height aspect as you're driving down and seeing those kind of things. And that's why three foot's been set as a town code, more of a sightline, safety for pedestrians, drivers, people pulling in and out of driveways. Can you address, I guess, in a sense of why this wouldn't be an issue in terms of sightline or a safety concern?
We did plan to have a step back, number one, a five-foot step back from the road, so it wouldn't be directly on the property line. Furthermore, we really feel that the safety issue is not the fence or the size of the fence, because the size of our fence, anyone of average adult can see over our fence easily, cars can see over it. The real safety concern for us is honestly the absence of the stop sign there. There's only one stop sign at that three-way intersection.
On the corner of Old Browncroft and Parkview driveway, that's where the stop sign currently is. But, the, it, yeah, as it, as it, it was installed there, as I, it appears to me originally because Parkview parrot level, Browncroft, which was the more functional road, but it's no longer that way anymore. And there's, there hasn't been any change in regards to stop signs there. So, the flow of traffic has changed with the addition of Parkview Drive, and.
That safety concern, really, the main concern of the neighborhood, is that three-way intersection. And the fact, really, that there's only one stop sign, and many people don't even stop at that one stop sign. So, the addition of a stop sign at the corner of Old Browncroft and Parkview, I think, would be ex, very beneficial, and maybe a warning sign saying new stop sign is there. People will be coming around the corner and ready to slow down and stop. And there's, then the sightline isn't an issue, honestly.
So, if there was a stop sign, the sightline, the sightline wouldn't be an issue, but until there is a stop sign, or until there is a stop sign, that we would have to address the sightline issue with the fence? Is that what you're saying?
I feel like, me, the town of Penn Field, should review this intersection and approve a stop sometime for that corner, absolutely. But, and I do feel that our setback in the height of our fence is not going to be a sightline issue. In addition, I feel the real issue is the absence of that stop sign there.
Can you speak to, I guess, how you decided upon the height of the fence?
Well, for, to, the, the main idea and the main purpose of our fence on the property is to allow our resting greyhounds to run freely and not have, and like, not for us to have to beat them on leash. We don't want to keep them on leash all the time. We'd like to have them run freely and have the run of the property. And the, and the only way maybe you can do that with greyhounds is to put, build a fence on our property.
Minimum height of three and a half feet. They really want a six-foot fence around our property to.
Keep the dogs in.
Safely keep a male greyhound, for example, inside of the property. We have two female greyhounds, and they are, they're members of our family. We definitely want them to have a full run of the property, and we think that this additional height is necessary for their safety.
And now, did you consider any other layouts in terms of keeping the fence closer, or I guess farther away from the road, so then you could have a taller fence? In a sense, you could have a six-foot fence if it was farther away from the road?
The problem with our property is its existence, the playgrounds that are on property already, and we do utilize them, we've already cleaned them up. We've cut back a tremendous amount of overgrowth, and now, you can see clearly all through our property. And with the addition of this fence, that's really not going to block the sightline.
Yeah.
And with the setback as well, it's going to maintain that feeling of openness, but give our dogs the security and the access to our whole property.
And once again, we, we're, we're not trying to create a privacy fence. We, we don't, we don't want to section our house off from the community, which is what I think a six-foot fence would do. And that's why we, we'd like to have a shorter fence, and three and a half feet, we feel will both protect our dogs and keep them in our, in our property. And, and.
Maintain community.
Yeah, maintain community at the same time, because we don't, we don't want to put a six-foot fence to, we don't want to have a privacy fence, we want to have a community fence, I guess.
Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you. Did, are you aware of the letters? Did you guys receive copies of the letters or comments from neighbors, both, I think, in favor and in opposition?
We did.
Yes, we did.
Okay. Did you want to address any of those comments further?
Well, I feel like we've addressed one of the, one of the main problems, which was the sightlines and the views and the, and the way that that intersection functions. But, secondly, it's talking about an adjacent line where there's, it exists, there's trees, and there are dead trees still on the property that we do intend to cut down.
And, in particular, on the southeast corner of our property, there is a pine tree that's, that it's dead, and it needs to be removed. It's my intention to remove that tree. Whether we build this fence or not, that tree is going to be removed, as has all the rest of the overgrowth and, you know, trees that are really prosperous. We're, we're going to take care of our property and manage it in a way, and manicure it in a way that's respectful of the neighborhood. We do appreciate that open space, and we do.
Yeah. For, for instance, the next, the next problem with it was, they say, the, no other properties in the, in the neighborhood have, have a similar fencing. And, and I agree with that. And I, like, once again, I don't, and clearly, nobody else has a greyhound like ours, because they, they request a six-foot fence, but we are able to do a three-and-a-half-foot fence. Any fencing is better for them than not. And, once again, that's the reason why we're fencing their property, is to keep our dogs on our property and make sure that they, they have the run of our property.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all the questions I have right now.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Marie.
Out of curiosity, why wouldn't you use an invisible fence?
They'll, they'll run right through it and won't even, they'll get shocked, but they'll run straight through it. As I said, greyhounds, they, they need a fence, because an invisible fence just doesn't, just doesn't do it for them. They, they go too fast, and they'll go straight through it without.
Okay, so, I'm just a little confused, because if there, the large greyhounds, I mean, I know the breed, is a three-and-a-half-foot fence really even going to work? Like, why have a fence at all?
Our, our dogs are, are female dogs, and they're about half the size of male greyhounds. And they are trained, if they have a physical barrier in front of them, that, if they've been trained around, that's different than an invisible fence. Many, many dogs will run right through an invisible fence. These dogs are retired racers that we've rescued, and they're like members of our family. And, again, we can't risk anything like them running through an invisible fence. They will not run through a physical barrier fence that's three and a half feet tall, which is above their head.
Yep, they're currently fenced, still with a three-and-a-half-foot fence.
Okay, thank you. Well, one more question. So, if I read everything correctly, you're talking about a fence in the, in the front, entirely, circling the entire property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, had you thought about maybe just fencing in the backyard?
The only, the only variance that we're asking for is on the, the front, the street-facing part of the fence, and that's, that's what we're seeking approval for, is that portion of the fence.
To my question.
And we don't want to section off part of our property, because they, they need the freedom to go and come if they please, and as their family members, and we don't want to have to, as currently, there is a chain link fence that encompasses the, the front triangle.
We, our property is 1.3 acres. We have a pavilion, we have three playgrounds currently. We're not taking down any of those structures. We're enhancing those, we're utilizing those. We don't want the chain link fence separating our property off like that. We want our whole family, including our dogs, to be able to be with us when we're having family time in the yard, whether it be in the pavilion, or at this playground, or that playground, or the other playground. Our dogs should have free run of the whole property, not to have to look at us enjoying family time while they are stuck in their little area. That's what we do not want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything else from the board? Okay. I do have one comment here, I believe submitted to the website. Do we have anybody on the phone?
I wouldn't know.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Let's put that person through. I think it's probably, well, let me not speculate.
Let's find out who it is.
Yeah. Ms. Lee, would you provide your comments, please? Give us your name and address, and you can let us know your comments.
Sure. For the record, this is Angie, and here with my husband, we reside at 24 Browncroft Boulevard. There's an echo on the phone.
Yeah, we're, we're, we can, you're, you're breaking up, and we can barely hear you. So, are you using a telephone, cellphone?
I'm using the.
Ah.
That's better.
Much better.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you guys. Hope everyone's safe and healthy. My husband and I have been listening in on the presentation, and in addition to the written comments and photographs that we submitted, we just wanted to elaborate as to the main point that I think Angie had raised earlier, which is the safety of the proposed application. The first photograph submitted was taken earlier this morning to show you kind of an as-is or real-time photograph, I'll say. As you'll see, I took it from the edge where I would be exiting the driveway to make a left onto Browncroft Boulevard. The, you know, even if the vegetation is cleaned up, the proposed fence, where it would be, would entirely block our line of vision, both to oncoming traffic as well as myself. So, we believe that it would be very unsafe to all motorists and pedestrians. The proposed stop sign would be after. The proposed stop sign would be after the, you know, the tree that you see on the right. And I mean, it just so happens that that truck passed as I was taking the photograph. With the fence, if it were approved, I would not see that truck until I was jutting out into the street. It would be unsafe. And again, the proposed stop sign is after this street. So it would do really nothing to improve visibility. It might be coming at a slower speed. But currently, as is, I have the full vision. You know, I would say it's right until the top of that curve. So I don't think the proposed solution of a stop sign really remedies the safety concern. And I didn't really see any alternative to that being addressed tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Lee from the board? All right, I think between the email and your comments, I think we clearly understand your concerns. I don't see any other comments which have come through. So I'll just, once again, ask the applicants whether you want to address Ms. Lee's specific concerns or you feel you've commented on those issues enough already. You certainly don't have to, but I'll give you another shot if you like.
Certainly would love to address those concerns. I see from the picture, to me, the vehicle appears to be set back from the road quite a bit. And if they were actually parked at the end of their driveway, the line of sight is different from what the picture shows. So I don't think that picture is representation. I do understand your concern. I would like to say that our fence is, again, not a privacy fence.
It's shorter than that sign there in the picture, actually. I don't know how tall that sign is, but I believe it's around five feet, six, maybe? Six even? So our fence, once again, would only be three and a half feet. And there would be a post there that would be four and a half feet. So... And also, I believe the driveway is horseshod, and they could maybe use the other exit. I'm not entirely sure.
Ms. Lee, that would be a question that we do have for you. To my recollection, I feel like your driveway has two entrances. Is that correct? Or is it just that one way in and out?
We have a turnaround. That's correct. But the proposed fencing is opaque. And so even if we're to be perpendicular to Brown Cross Boulevard, again, from the vantage point of, I took two pictures. One, outside the vehicle so that you could see the contact. And two, from right behind the driver's wheel. I think it would be, you know, as a matter of safety, kind of like inch onto the road, right? I don't just exit. And I don't think it's fair that if the variance were granted, I would be limited in the use of my property. It goes against what was raised in the primary proposal, that it doesn't affect other properties or values of other properties. I'd like to have full use of my turnaround.
Yeah, Ms. Lee, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Lee, but that's... The board wouldn't do that. The board wouldn't grant them a variance and require you to limit your property. That's... That wouldn't happen. But, okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Let me ask the applicant a question. So we're talking about one small corner that is a concern to Ms. Lee out of 1.3 acres. Is there any way that you could construct the fence, still giving your dogs room to run, but alleviate Ms. Lee's concerns? And maybe have it 1.25 acres? Or whatever that may end up being?
I think absolutely. We could, you know, just come around that garden in a way that cuts further back on the road there. Absolutely. And keep it tight around our garden there. Because there is a garden at the front corner there, I guess. Probably shows better in one of her pictures. But yeah, absolutely. We wouldn't mind doing that.
Because we should.
Come back for that? Or can we still get...
I mean, I think that it might make sense for you and Ms. Lee and her husband to maybe get together and see what the two of you can figure... Or the four of you can figure out that everybody can live with.
I'd actually like to go one step farther. Would you guys be opposed to meeting with the town engineer just to have them come out and say, okay, this is, you know, this would be a sightline concern? This wouldn't be, you know, if we had a town staff out there to look at it and say, this wouldn't be an issue with the roadside view? Would you be open to that?
Absolutely. From this end right here, if you wouldn't mind where that garden is, it's a corner at the edge of her property. If you drew a straight line from that garden to our garden, I wouldn't mind putting a fence right there. And she would be able to see all the way around the corner. And we could just come right to the proper line from there. That would be fine with me. What do you think?
So that's, I guess, a good starting way of communication. I think there are concerns from people coming from other directions as well. So I don't want to speak for Andres, but I think... But I will. And I think that what he was getting at is he's going to make a motion to table for the town engineer to go out and take a look at this application, take a look at all the concerns that have been expressed. And probably would be willing to invite anyone that wanted to go and be there and talk about it with him. I think it's a good idea for the applicant and all neighbors that are concerned to be there if they can. So I think that's where we're headed. And if there's a... If you want to continue the conversation, that's great. You can come up with something that satisfies folks. All the better. So...
My only concern is the delay of aid for myself and my family. We're already utilizing the property for ourselves. And we have our dogs there regularly.
Right.
The delay is a concern for me.
Understood. The other thing we could do is vote on it tonight. And I'm not sure that the board's safety concerns have been adequately addressed. But in any event, it's up to the board as to what the board's going to do tonight. Although we certainly understand that delay is, you know, something that's not always great to happen. But for the right reason, it's fine. And safety is always a good reason to delay something if need be. All right, we do have another comment on hold from Peter Gosson. So if that's a phone as well... Mr. Gosson, if you can hear me, go right ahead.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I'd like to address this.
Feel free.
I have a 2380 Old Brown Cross, which would be just west of their property. My... I have a couple of concerns. Number one is the site, because of all the cars that blow through the stop sign. At least now with the fence and the pine trees that are along the property there, where they have cut the lower branches down, you can at least look over and get a heads up whether or not you're going to get in an accident. There's been so many numerous, numerous close calls on that corner with everybody. Also, I didn't realize that this was going to be a fence in all those dogs. I mean, it's an often large area for your dogs to run. I understand greyhounds like to run. But the site distance to me is a major issue. And I'm just, out of curiosity, just kind of started on the puppy milk. That's what I'm wanting. Because there are a lot of people from all over the neighborhood that walk by there with their dogs. And all we're going to hear is constant barking. That's my question.
Okay. I want to make sure I understand your question. Are you asking if the dogs are going to be barking because of the fence?
No, because of all the other people walking by with their dogs. And if their dogs are going to be running free all over this property, what's to say it's not going to get noisy? And also the site distance. I understand what he said about walking down the road is a lot different than being in a car. You're a lot lower in a car, and you can't see around the corner.
Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Gosson from the board?
No.
Nope? Okay, once again, I think there are a lot of the same concerns, except for perhaps the running and barking. But if the applicants want to address Mr. Gosson's concerns, go right ahead. Not saying you have to, but feel free.
Oh, I had a pretty... I'm in the yard. Hey, Mr. Gosson.
Okay.
So our dogs are super nice and very friendly. They're very quiet. You don't bark hardly ever. But they're not that type of dog. And when they're in our yard, they're not by themselves generally. We're keeping an eye on them or else they're with them. So we don't... They're our family. We keep them... They have the free run of our interior of our house as well. So they sleep on our beds. They lay on our couches. They're family dogs. And they're... You know, we just want to give them the same respect that we give the rest of our family. And we don't neglect our animals. We care for them deeply. And they're not just set loose wild on our property. So if that's a concern, please don't be concerned in any way, shape, or form, please, sir.
Okay.
All right. But I think my main concern is mostly the site distance.
Right.
I'm just curious if they're going to be breeding these dogs?
No, they both have been neutered or just baited.
All right. I do not see any other folks calling in with comments. Let me check the website one more time. No. All right. So... Oh, wait. Mr. Gosson, you got another thing to say?
Just one more thing.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if they're aware of how many deer are on that property?
Yeah. I'm not sure that that was a question he was really looking for an answer for, but the answer's probably a lot. You did say... Yeah, okay. All right. Very good.
And they would be jumping over a three-foot high fence.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for the little bit of levity, too. We appreciate that. All right.
No problem. Thank you for hearing me.
You're welcome. All right, then let's proceed with the... Well, Andres, I don't want to...
Is that it? There's no more online?
There are no more callers or online commenters.
Okay. Well, I do want to table this for the town engineer to go out there and just verify our, you know, the issues that were raised for the sightline. Because there was more than one person. Myself, that was even a thought that I had when I was out there looking, when I did a site visit. And so I would appreciate that kind of input from the town.
Makes sense. I would add to that... I'll second the motion. And I will add to that and request, Andy, that you... That the town notify any citizen that commented either in any manner. Email, call, website. And just let that person know that the engineer's going to be going out there. And if date, time, if not, provide a comment. So let's try to give everybody a chance to get together, talk about it, and see if a community solution can happen.
Yeah, and I think the key is really, does the half a foot difference, or, you know, whatever difference from what's allowed, you know, the three foots to the four-and-a-half foot columns to the three-and-a-half foot panels, does that make a difference for sightline safety, things like that? If it was within code and allowed, would that be okay? Or would it still not, you know?
Right.
What are those differences? So we have a little better input from that.
All right, so we have a motion to table for those reasons in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are we not going to do seeker then?
Right.
Yeah.
We can't. I thought Pete said we couldn't. I thought Pete said we couldn't last time.
Okay, next item, please.
That's why I didn't do it last time.
So... Pardon me?
Are we...
The matter is tabled until our next meeting, which is currently scheduled for August 20th, I believe. The third Thursday in August. But again, you'll be hearing from the town ahead of that. The plan is for the engineer to come out, meet with you, meet with any of your neighbors or other citizens that commented on this issue, to walk around, take a look, do some measurements, come up with an opinion on the safety issues here.
How do we pursue the stop sign at that corner?
You should talk with the engineer about it at that time. And we'll follow up as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, that's actually another issue for the tabling, is to comment on the placement of traffic control devices. Please. All right, so we have that motion to table. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I seconded it.
Okay.
About 45 minutes ago. In my mind, anyway. All right.
I thought we voted.
Next item, please.
Michelle Kilizak, 42... I'm sorry if I got the name bad. 42 Mary Hill Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a front porch with less front setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 42 Mary Hill Drive. The property is owned by Michelle Kilizak and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 108.15-2-45, application number 20Z-0015.
Okay, do we have the applicant online here? Anybody here for...
Do you have us?
Oh, I think so. There you go.
Do you have us okay now?
Yes, we do. We can see you and we can hear you. So why don't you go ahead and give us your name and address, and go ahead with your application?
Okay, this is Richard and Michelle Kilizak, 42 Mary Hill Drive. What we're looking to do is we're remodeling the whole house on the exterior. And we were hoping to put a small porch on the front to be taken up a seven-by-nine-and-a-half area on the side of the existing concrete deck out there right now. We've spoken with most of the neighbors, with all of the neighbors in that, and nobody has any issues with it. It won't be blocking any kind of news. And it's going to hit a roof over the railing. And it will be done by a contractor, too.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I mean, sure. So the setback requirement is 50 feet. And your house sits like 51 feet from the road or from the property line, correct? 51... So really, any sort of porch that would go on there would need some sort of variance, unless it was one foot wide, correct?
That is correct, I would say, yeah.
And I'm presuming that the wood-framed porch is going to keep up with the character of the home, and it would look nice and it would be built well, correct?
Yes, it would. It would be an improvement to the whole house, too, because the house is in fairly sorry shape when we bought it here last year.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay.
We've got a house, too. And there are other houses within the area, not right on our street, that do have little porches on the fronts of them.
Well, that's a good point. And you did submit a good written application as well. Any other questions from the board? All right. Any comments from the public? Well, because I forgot, and everybody forgot to remind me, we're going to wait a minute or so and see if we get any comments from the public. We should have music playing now, by the way.
And it would give us a little coverage on a day like today.
And maybe a day like this weekend's going to be where it's going to be.
Yeah.
100 degrees again. Really.
Okay. All right. I don't see any call-in comments. I don't see any comments made via the website. So we're going to move on to the application. And first, we'll start with the environmental issue.
I make a motion to declare this as Type 2 action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
A second, or excuse me, a motion by Matt to declare it a Type 2 action under Seeker, second by Andres. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, get to the merits of it.
So I would make a motion to approve the application. It does not appear that it's going to create an undesirable change. It might be able to be achieved by some of their method, but it is... It would be like a one-foot porch. So that it's not... It's not a substantial request. It's not going to have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And it's self-created, but it's such a minimal request that I don't put too much weight on the self-creation. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Second by Mike. Any further comment? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, there you go, folks. Congratulations. Good luck with the porch.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. May we have the next application, please?
Sure. Insight Land Development Incorporated, 16 Silverlace Way, Webster, New York, 14580. Request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an existing accessory building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1918 Jackson Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Benoit and Sylvia Dumay and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 124.16-1-39.3, application number 20Z-0016.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank the board for their time this evening. My name is Rudy Newfeld. I work with Crosstown Construction. And this evening, I have volunteered to represent Mr. and Mrs. Dumay. They are the owners of the property. Crosstown Construction has the property under contract. And myself and our staff have become quite good friends with Mr. and Mrs. Dumay. And they find it challenging to get out and to be in front of the board. So we are requesting this evening on their behalf a variance. There's a shed that, as the property was divided up, they wanted to keep it for sentimental values. And it is now closer to the property than the code allows. So we're asking for a variance for 15 feet. The people that would be behind it will be our future homeowners. There's some nice foliage and trees there, so we don't anticipate a problem. The shed has tremendous sentimental value for the people. And so on their behalf, we're requesting that the board grant the variance so that the existing neighbors and Dumays can keep their shed that has a lot of value sentimentally for that. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can from the board.
All right. Thank you for being here. And I was looking for something in writing that... From the owners, authorizing you to appear for them. I don't see... I may have missed it. But you're representing that they have authorized you to appear and make this request on their behalf?
Yes, sir. And there was a letter submitted probably a week and a half ago or so. It was written by the Dumays, basically stated what I have stated, and gave us authorization to represent them as well.
I certainly saw a letter that they wrote. I just... I didn't see that it... I'll accept your representation on this.
Thank you.
So... A question that I have is that if this were to be granted and no other change being made, we'd see no difference to the naked eye?
No. Right now, if you look at the white line that's shown in the shed is behind it to the south, that white line will skew on an angle and incorporate the shed. So visually from the road, there'll be no difference. Really, even from the future neighbors, the property line will have been established, and the shed will go on for the people. So we didn't see any detriment to our future purchase, our neighbors, and it meant a lot to them. So we were very happy to change the property lines for them and try to make that consecutive.
Right. And do you know, is the shed being used?
Not really. He has his old garden tractor in there and a wood splitter. And he's in his mid-80s now. Just all the things that he worked down there. They had a tree farm there for 40-plus years. And it's just all the things that were part of his life that are special to him. And to have to tear that down and throw them all away would be pretty tough for him. So we told him we would work with them and try to do this for him.
And I understand the planning board has approved the go-ahead here with the exception of the condition that this board grant the variance. Other than that, it's a green light from the planning board?
Yes, we have full approvals. We're ready to put a shovel in the ground. Quite a little special piece. Crosstown is very happy to be part of it. We've gotten excellent response. Already haven't really started marketing, but we have Penfield families that are very anxious to get their families moved in here. And it's going to be a real special little place.
Okay. Once again, I will remind the public that they can call 340-8771 if they have any comments about this project, or they can comment through the website, www.penfield.org. Do we have any other questions from board members?
No.
No.
Really?
Is there... Can we place a condition in terms of, you know, condition? Or, you know, in a sense if it's old or falling apart type of thing like that, that once it's... Once the building is no longer there, the variance is gone? In a sense, so someone couldn't rebuild a brand-new building there in that place? Or is that not possible?
That might be a question for Pete.
I think that's Pete's question, but I think it...
Usually runs with the land.
That's what I was concerned about. Because if it runs with the land, and this is more of a sentimental type thing, that let's say, you know, 10 years down the road, this is no longer worth keeping up because it is in poor shape. Would that variance... Could that variance be conditioned on that? Where it's gone, it's gone? I know normally they don't.
Well, I suppose we could always condition it to that effect. And if somebody wanted to challenge that later on, they could. But I don't think anyone is interested in leaving up a building that's unsafe or dilapidated sometime in the future.
I have a comment, if I might.
Sure, of course.
I don't think that is a bad suggestion at all. I don't know which board member made that. But we're leaving the sheds for their purposes. So to condition this approval with the fact that any new sheds, if this becomes dilapidated or in the future has to be torn down, that a new shed would meet the current standards for setbacks, I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
Great. Okay, we're all... We all agree to that, then. And I'm glad that question also gave a little time for people to call in. Because once again, I was a little late with that. But lo and behold, I see no phone calls, nor do I see any comments coming through the website. So I will make a motion... I'm using my mouse, which goes to that monitor, to try to move the cursor on this monitor. And I've only done it 10 times.
I think you were going to talk about Type 2.
I was going to say, make a motion to declare this a Type 2 action under Seeker. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Yeah, I got two of them.
Yeah.
We only need one.
Matt.
Matt won. Heidi says that one.
He was first.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now to the merits of it. I'm going to make a motion to approve the request. The reality is that this has been here for quite some time. It was a good suggestion by Andres to condition it, as he stated. So I'll make that part of my motion. And again, no change will be apparent to the naked eye here. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve.
Can we also put something in with regard to maintaining the buffering that exists?
Yes. That's fine by me. I'd make that change to my motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the condition stated. We have a second from Marie, according to Heidi. And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, board members. We appreciate your time.
Next item.
Megan Bork, 261 Woodruff Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.5-C1G of the code to allow a massage therapy business, respite massage, at 2221 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Hometown Antiques and Properties, LLC, and is zoned business, non-retail. SBL number 140.01-2-10. This is application number 20Z-0017.
Okay. Please give us your name and address and proceed with your application request.
Sure. Megan Burke, 261 Woodruff Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. I'm a licensed massage therapist, currently located at 1801 Penfield Road. And I'm just looking to move my business from its current location, just down the street, to 2221 Penfield Road.
Thank you. Could you tell me a little bit about what your business will be like and what services it's going to provide?
Yeah, sure. So I've been in practice for about four years. I offer traditional massage, Swedish e-tissue, chair massage, prenatal massage, and myofascial release. And I'm there a couple times a week, depending on who's booked. And that's what I do.
And how many people will you be employing?
Oh, it's just me. I'm the owner and sole employee, and I don't intend on hiring anyone.
How about the parking situation?
There is parking in the back for employees, which I believe fits about five people. Five cars. And then in the front, I believe there's seven parking spaces and then one handicap.
Okay, thank you. And are you... What is the signage? You're just having a sign? You said in your application you had a sign?
Yes, I will have a sign. And I honestly don't know the measurements of this sign on hand. Yeah, but there will be a small sign out on the front.
Okay, so you would need to just check on the code to make sure that the sign meets the requirements?
Sure.
Okay, great. I don't have any other questions.
Before we go to anyone else at the board, I again will remind the public that they may call 340-8771. If they have any comments on this application, they may also comment using the town website, www.penfield.org. Any other questions from the board members?
What kind of businesses in that building right now?
I don't believe there is currently any business in there right now. It used to be a doctor's office.
That's my only question.
It is vacant right now.
Okay. I see no comments made through the town website. And I see nobody waiting on the phone to comment. So, given that, we will proceed with the deliberations on the application.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that this is a Type 2 action pursuant to Seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay, so for the Seeker motion made by Marie, declared a Type 2, seconded by Mike Belgiorno. All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits of the application, I would also like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for respite massage. This business is definitely in harmony with the other neighboring businesses and properties around there. I think it's actually a great use for a vacant doctor's office. There seems to be no issue with ingress, egress, any kind of parking issues. And I'm glad that there's employee parking in the back, which keeps it open for customers in the front. And I don't see any issues regarding the health or safety and welfare of the building. People using it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the application made by Marie. Did we get a second?
Mike, I think Mike... Oh, no, you did Seeker, right?
No, but that was Seeker. But I'll second this one.
Mike seconds the motion to approve as well. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Next application, please.
Lisa Scala, 694 Cottage Brook Lane, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.5-C1G of the code to allow an aesthetic services business, fresh facials and feet at 2221 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Hometown Antiques and Properties, LLC, and is zoned business, non-retail. SBL number 140.01-2-10. Application number 20Z-0018.
Okay, go ahead. Give us your name and address and proceed with your request.
Hi, I'm Lisa Scala. My address is 694 Cottage Brook Lane in Webster, New York. And I currently am renting the space with Megan right now at 1801 Penfield Road. And we would like to move down the street to 2221 Penfield Road. I'm an esthetician and do nails as well. So I do different aesthetic services, such as waxing and facials and manicures and pedicures as well.
All right, before we open it up for questions... Yeah, the one time I didn't need to be reminded. Once again, we'll remind the public that they can call 340-8771 or make a comment through the town website portal, www.penfield.org. Now, having said that, I'll ask if there's any questions from the board.
Thank you, Lisa, for coming tonight. So again, my questions are very similar to what I asked Megan. Can you talk a little bit about the number of employees you'll have? Your hours of business, which I actually forgot to ask Megan? Anything else you'd like to share about that?
Yeah, so we're by appointment only. The earliest I would take appointments is 8:00 in the morning. And the latest that I would take appointments is 8:00 at night. I work four days a week. And right now, if we move, there will be... It will be a larger space, so there'll be some additional rooms that would allow us to have a maximum, including me and Megan. including me and Megan, five people there.
Five employees or five customers?
Total.
No, 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 five employees total.
Okay.
But since we only work with one person at a time, there would be five customers total at a time as well.
Okay, got it, okay. And again, will there be ample parking, given the space in the back? The space in the front seems fine.
Yep, five spaces in the back, and then seven regular spaces in the front, and then there's one handicap space in the front as well.
Okay, and, um, do you have a sign as well?
Yes, I did send, uh, the sign information to Andy on the measurements of it, because right now there is currently a sign board that's already there. And we were gonna use, uh, vital signs to create a sign that fit that, um, current sign board.
Okay, so you're just going to work with Andy then to make sure that it's in compliance with code?
Yeah.
Same as Megan, okay. Great, those were the only questions I had.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, I don't see anybody waiting on the phone. No, well, wait a second. We do have a comment from Steve Sarone of Hometown Antiques and Properties. Uh, this, the comment is, "This sign is three by four internally light sign." I assume that means lit, no offense?
I think that's our last, okay, that might be the last one.
Is it for the last?
That's the landlord, I think.
The landlord's the last property.
Oh, yeah.
It's the same property.
Same property, yeah.
Okay, so it's just basically, uh, it's through the town's website, so it's just a written comment? And it's just to alert the board that, that, uh, yeah, that's internally lit sign, three by four. But in any event, you're gonna work with Andy to make sure whatever signage you put up is compliant?
Yes.
Great, all right, thanks, Mr. Sarone, for the, uh, comment as well. All right, I don't see anything else, so, uh, let's move to the Seeker.
Great, so I'll make a motion that this is a type-two action pursuant to Seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Motion to declare it a type-two action and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And, um, I'd also like to make a motion to approve, um, a conditional use permit for this business in the same reasoning for, um, fresh facials and feet as there was for respite massage. Um, I think it's in very good, um, place, uh, keeping in harmony with the, with the other properties and, you know, it's, no issues that I can think of that would get in the way, such as parking, ingress, egress. So I think this is a really great addition and filling this vacant space.
All right, Marie's made a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Andres will second it, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome. Uh, next application, please.
Scott Terry and Sally Costin, 1579 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a storage shed with less side setback than required under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code and less rear setback than required under section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1579 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently owned by Scott Terry and Sally Costin and is owned RA2. SBL number 110.01-1-51. Application number 20Z-0019.
Okay, I see the applicant, if you can give us your name and address and then go ahead and proceed with your, uh, application.
Sure, my name is Scott Terry. Uh, address is 1579 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank the board for considering this matter. I'd also like to say hi to Claire and Mason, who think it's the coolest thing that daddy's on TV right now. So, we bought this house seven years ago with a shed in the northwest corner of our property. Uh, when I first met our neighbor, he asked me about the shed, asked me what my plans were with the shed. Um, it was kind of falling apart back then. Um, I focused the last seven years on working on the inside of the house, and I'm finally ready to turn my attention to, uh, the outside of the house. In doing so, I discovered that the current shed was never applied for, or, uh, whether it be a permit or a variance. Um, so before I applied for a building permit, I, uh, I'm applying for a variance to basically put a new shed that's slightly larger, uh, in the same location as the current shed. My neighbor did give me a letter saying that he approves me building the shed with no conditions. The one caveat is, I, I have not been able to get in touch with anyone from the church, which you see on the picture, uh, west of my property. Um, I've left voicemails and sent, uh, a few emails, and I, I have not been able to, uh, reach them. However, I think if you look at the pictures, uh, from the presentation that I submitted, um, I don't think that should be an issue. You, you can't see my shed, uh, in the summer months due to the brush and overgrowth in between church property and my property. That's the picture right there. Um, from 250, you can't see the shed at all. Um, so really, from my perspective, the only issue is my neighbor directly to the north of me, who would be more than happy to, uh, see a new shed where the old one is.
Okay, I will take this opportunity to, once again, remind the public, if you have a comment on this application, you can give it to us in, uh, two ways. One is by calling 340-8771. The other is by going to the town website, www.penfield.org, and, uh, find your comment that way. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, um, the existing shed, we didn't, I didn't see anywhere where you gave the dimensions of that? Do you know what, what they are?
Yeah, the existing shed is eight by eight.
Eight by eight, okay. And, um, height?
Um, it would be a shot in the dark here, but I'd say it's probably eight to nine feet tall.
Okay. And will the new shed be approximately the same height?
Uh, the new shed will probably be a little bit larger. I have to look into what the lowest pitch I can have on the roof is. Um, but I was planning on stick framing it with eight-foot tall walls, so, uh, whatever the minimum rise, uh, I can have to, uh, to the peak there would be the additional. So my guess is it'll, it'll probably be one to two feet taller.
Okay. Um, can you speak to why you need a bigger shed, to begin with?
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things they don't tell you when you have kids is, you're not just giving birth to children, but all the stuff that comes with them, right? So, we've got power wheels, we've got toys, we've got, uh, kiddie pool supplies. I have lots of tools, miter saws, things like that, I have a riding lawnmower. So, I mean, the current shed, basically, once I drive the riding lawnmower into it, there's not room for anything else inside of it. Um, we only have a one-car detached garage, um, which, uh, I believe you stopped by the house today, I'm sorry I wasn't here, but if you were here, you would have seen that it's completely full of, uh, my tools, two power wheels, and, uh, every other building material that's been cut from scrap, uh, over the last couple years. So, uh, the main goal is to get a space that I can put the, the gardening tools in, the power wheels, the lawnmower, and, uh, also have a little bit of room for myself to, to put my, set up a workspace so that we can actually free up the garage and, and utilize it to at least put one car in it, uh, come winter time.
Okay. The, the one issue I had, or the one question I had, is you got a pretty large lot there, uh, with a lot, lot of area. Um, you talked in terms of, there's no place to put the shed that makes sense, and also no place that works for your family's needs. Those are kind of generalized statements. What, why can't you relocate it so that it's in compliance with the code?
Yeah, sure, so is it, can I share my screen, is that, uh?
Sure.
permitted?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so... Let me know when you guys can, uh, see.
We can see.
We can see it.
Okay. So, i- in terms of, in, in terms of the current regulations and as far as setbacks, so this, this outer line obviously is my property line. The inside line here that borders everything is the recommended, or the, the setback rules. Um, one thing that wasn't included on, uh, my original drawing is that I didn't realize the, the fifty-foot setback from the front of the property. So that, that's not on the drawing of the, the one that I submitted, but this is the, if you can see my, my cursor here, this is the fifty-foot setback from the front of the property, right here. So, basically, if we're talking about where else could I put a shed within, inside of the ten-foot line, you're talking about from here, over to here.
I can't.
Up to this southwest corner, and, uh, along this back line. So, when you're looking at the white.
Mr. Terry, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's really difficult to see your cursor, so maybe if you could be, uh, descriptive?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Uh, let me just, I'm trying to zoom in here. All right. So, uh, you see the, this, this represents a, a tree trunk down here? Do you, do you see where I'm hovering currently?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so the, the fifty-foot back setback line from the front of the property, is this line right here moving right to left across the property?
Yep.
Okay, so, in terms of where the shed could be, it would be anywhere within this border, left of this line here, below this line here, and to the right of this line here. Um, so, this area in between the one-car garage and the house, you know, obviously, I, I wouldn't put a shed anywhere in here, 'cause that's kind of the main, you know, I'd say entertainment area of the backyard. Um, the whole, and, and I don't know if you guys all went out to my property, but our yard is basically three tiers, so the house is on the upper tier. Uh, this middle section is about three to four feet lower than the level of the house, and then this section is another three to four feet lower than the middle section. So, in referring to the middle section, our leach field runs the entire length of the middle section. We also have a badminton setup right in the middle, and this is where the kids, for the most part, do their playing and running or any, you know, sporting event. They also like to run laps around the planting bed here. Um, they try to get me to do it with them, but I'm, I'm too old at this point, so I, I don't entertain them. So really, from my perspective, when I think about where, where else a shed could go, there's this space right here.
Yep.
But putting a shed there would basically mean I would have to do some excavating to rearrange this planting bed, because the shed would take up the entire space of the access when you're, when you're accessing this point of the, the lawn. And then the only other section, I think, would be potentially this section right here. Um, it's not flat, it would again require some excavation. And also, this maple tree that I started hovering around is on its way out. Uh, we used to have two maple trees here and here, right next to the house, that came down in the windstorm a few years back. Um, so, I, I would hate to build anything that would be in jeopardy of, of being damaged by that tree, similar to the damage we experienced when, when these trees came down. Um, but again, also, it's, it's kind of right in the middle of the third tier of the lawn, and it just, from my perspective, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense. Um, and more to the point, we already have a shed that's been there for thirty years. Um, I don't know that it's, that it's caused any undue burden on, on either properties that are adjacent to mine. Um, so, I mean, from my perspective, it's just one of those things, when, when you look at where the current shed is, and you try to figure out, is there a better place that would be more functional, that would make sense? It really is tucked back, it's hidden from the road. Um, there's no grass that really grows under, over here because of, uh, the overgrowth from this tree. So, you know, from my perspective, it's just, it, it just, you know, there's a shed there, I'd like to put another shed there.
Okay.
Just one that looks better and, uh, you know, suits, suits our needs better.
But one of the things we're charged with doing on this type of application is to determine that you can't have suitable relief by a means other than a variance. So if there is another spot that, quote, "makes sense," then, you know, that creates an issue for us. What about to the left of that tree in the back corner there, inside the, the rear setback?
So, you're, you're talking, you're referring to this space here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I have it defined as a hill in this general direction, I mean, that's, this is where the majority of the hill is, but there's a, there's a, there's still that same hill that, at a lesser grade, slopes down from where the cursor is right now and kind of flows down into this area. So, there would either need to be, uh, a, a lot of excavation to flatten this area out, or I would need to do, uh, pilings that were, you know, way taller than I would like to, um, and would also result in me having to build a, a ramp to drive the lawnmower up into the shed, if need be.
Okay. Um, what materials will the, the new shed be made out of?
So, my plan at this point is, is to, to use cement tubes and, and do a concrete, uh, pillar foundation, sitting on, uh, pressure-treated beams, and then, uh, it would be stick-framed, probably with pine, and, uh, to keep in tradition with the way the house was built, I would probably be doing, uh, pine clapboard siding.
Okay, same color as the house?
Um, well, I've been working on getting estimates to have the house painted, and, uh, it would be painted as the future color of the house, I'll say that.
All right, so it'll match the house?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and any exterior lighting gonna be on there? Or interior? Exterior?
You said exterior?
Yeah.
Um, you know, initially, I wasn't planning on, on putting any lighting in, but then the more I thought about, uh, hooking up the kids' power wheels and things like that, I, I, I was potentially, through the, uh, building permit process, going to look into, uh, adding, uh, electric to it just for, for purposes of charging and, uh, running my saw potentially if I'm, uh, using it up there.
Okay, but you're not gonna have any lights on the exterior of the shed?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
No.
All right. No, you're all anxiously awaiting. Oh, I see nobody has called in, if I'm correct. And I see no comments submitted through the town website, so let's proceed with the consideration.
Okay. First, for purposes of Seeker, I'm gonna make a motion that this is, to declare this a type-two, uh, action, requiring no further environmental review.
All right, we'll give that one to Marie. So we have a motion by Mike to declare it a type-two action under Seeker, and a second by Marie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
With regard to the, uh, motion itself, I'm gonna move to approve this. Um, although it's, it's, you know, reasonably larger than the existing shed, it is in a, in a location where it's only visible from the neighbor's point of view, and maybe in the winter and fall from the parking area of the church, but I don't see either as causing a, a, an adverse, uh, effect on the character of the neighborhood. As I said, the shed, shed's already been there for years. There's a lot of buffering around there, particularly in the spring and summer. For those who... For those reasons, I would move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike to approve, a second by Andres. I would only add, Mike, that, you know, you asked a good questions and I think the applicant answered them in a reasonable manner.
Right.
So any further discussion on that? Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, Claire Mason.
Sorry about that.
All right, have a good night. Thank you. And I think that was the last application, so public hearings are, well, we've already considered all the applications. So great job tonight, great job again, everybody downstairs, upstairs, everywhere.
Pete, Pete, you did a great job tonight.
Pete, fantastic. You've never sounded or looked better.
You know, I tried to hit my spacebar and come in and answer the question and I, by the time I got my cell unmuted, you'd already answered the question.
Right. Well, you know what? Harkening back to former days, Platania wouldn't even have the computer plugged in. So, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Night.
All right, we're done.
Boy, folks, jeez.
We are moving right along.
It's not bad.